Kipsey Planning Board meeting for September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Please join me for the pledge to start. My pledge relates to the five of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, et in terra nata. Thank you, everyone. For those on the Zoom call, just note that we have a quorum of five board members tonight in person here. And first up on the agenda is Mazda at twenty-three oh nine South Road amending their site plan. Welcome, guys.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Christopher Lapina with LaBella Associates.
Good evening, members of the board. Nicholas Ward-Willis with Keenan Bean Council for the applicant.
Good evening, Chad with Route nine Mazda.
Great.
Thank you. We're here this evening for an amended site plan. This is a project that was previously approved by the planning board, and construction on this project has started. The applicant, in moving forward with the construction of the building of this, has determined that due to price escalations over the last year to year and a half, has increased the cost of the building by two and a half times the original. As a result of that little dilemma, we had to revisit not only the building but other aspects of the project geared towards lowering the cost of the overall project. They were also informed by Mazda that their projected monthly car allotment, which was going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of, after this project, of about two hundred and fifty new cars a month, will be-
Can you speak directly into the mic? Because a couple people mentioned that they're having a little bit of a hard time hearing you.
Will be reduced to a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five cars a month going forward. That'll continue at least till 2030, they've been informed. So we took this opportunity to look at it from a parking standpoint as well on this project, as well as a building standpoint. The building that was previously before you had a square footage of approximately nineteen thousand and three hundred and fifty square feet. Predominantly, that was associated with a bump out in the western portion of the building to accommodate additional service bays because they were going to create a drop-off area internal to the building where a portion of the existing service bays are located. That is no longer the case. There is no longer the rear addition or additional service bays being proposed. They're going to continue to operate with their existing service bays as is within the building. What they are going to do is, on the south side of the building, they're going to create a twenty-six hundred square foot service drop-off area that'll accommodate not only the cars but the clientele waiting for their cars. With the reduction in the amount of cars that they would be seeing and opportunity to reduce construction costs here, we eliminated approximately sixty spaces overall from the project site. We were originally at four hundred and seventeen, and now we're down to three hundred and sixty-four, maybe a little less than sixty somewhere. I was also including the bays, so fifty-three spaces overall we've reduced. This resulted in approximately twenty thousand square foot reduction in pavement on the site. We did not modify the landscaping in a sense that we kept with the same density as was originally proposed for the site. The reduction in pavement on-site did allow us to reduce some of the on-site stormwater management features. In particular, we had two sets of permeable rows of pavement for the stormwater management. As a result of the twenty thousand square feet of pavement reduced, we were able to eliminate one of the rows of permeable pavement that we had on this project. We were able to slightly reduce the size of the infiltration basins on the southeast corner of the site. We did make some modifications to the lighting on the site. And the reason we'd made some modifications is because we recently learned through the submittals that a few of the lights that we had specked out in two thousand and nineteen are no longer manufactured. So we tried to mimic it in terms of loss factors, light loss factors and heights with some Hubble products. They were Beacon products. So that is some of the changes that you may have seen as it relates to the lighting. They are all three thousand watt lights like they were originally intended to be. We failed to put that on-
Kelvin, I'm sorry.
We forgot to place that on our plans, but we kept with the, in spirit with the previous resolution in terms of the lights that you wanted. If you recall, you wanted the lights on two separate circuits here. Certain lights would stay on in the evening, certain lights would shut off. That's still within our lighting plan, as we've seen this fit. We still can accommodate with the Arlington Fire District. We can still accommodate their fire trucks around the building. There is no impact to the WB sixty-two delivery vehicle that was intended for the site. We've included those movements within our plan. So what we're asking for this evening is an amended site plan approval on this overall building size reduction and parking reduction. We need the overall parking needs for the sites. This does not impact any work within the DOT right away, nor the permit associated with that. If anything, it reduces, obviously, the amount of flow going into the DOT's drainage system. We also provided the board a set of architectural elevations. And forgive me, the first mill that was made, they were not colored or rendered. There are no modifications being proposed to the color or materials that were originally approved by the board for the architecture. Those same materials are being carried over to the service addition as originally approved. At this time, we're, that's the overview of the modifications that we've made, and we're happy to field any questions that the board may have.
All right, thanks, Chris. Looks like your work is going on pretty well out there now. Eric?
Sure. Chris covered most of the ground, yet it's an amended site plan for approval by the board for purposes of SECRE. They did provide a comparison with the previous, and staff felt that it would be sufficient to adopt a, if the board was in agreement, that all the changes are essentially no change to environmental effects or less. Therefore, a consistency, a resolution of consistency for your consideration. On the site plan, it seems to be, we didn't have too many comments. The one I wanted to bring to your attention was in the parking. Some of the aisles were reduced as part of the reduction in previous surface. Normally, the board, the code requires twenty-six foot aisles. With board discretion, the approved plan had some twenty-four foot aisles. The storage areas are now shown scaled at twenty-two foot. But that's only for the storage spaces and not for the employee or customer parking. So we thought the board might be comfortable with that, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Chris, the lighting, as Chris said, is slightly modified. It's similar, maybe in some places slightly brighter than before, but certainly within reasonable levels of the board's agreement. So we've provided a resolution for approval for your consideration.
Thanks, Eric.
Oh, I'm sorry. The one other question you might want to speak with the applicant about is, and they might not answer it right now, but we, the town, since the last time that they were in, the town has adopted code with regard to EV chargers.
Yep.
And so if there's going to be any, that should be addressed. And if the board is comfortable, if they are going to do that, the board could authorize staff with this as a condition to review that.
Yep. Great, thanks, Eric.
Can we comment on the EV chargers?
Sure. I don't know if Mazda's planning any electrical-
Yeah, we have to, through Mazda and just through, you know, as far as the factory, all our stores. But there'll be two outside and two internal. So two internal for service. So we can, you know, obviously work on the vehicles. And then you'll have two outside that are accessible to the public.
Okay, and we have, as Eric mentioned, the town code to take a look at when you're installing those.
Yeah, we have a contract, just the ones they, it's the same company that does everybody's.
Makes sense. All right, thanks. Go to Andy.
So, yeah, as far as the plans are concerned, you know, I agree with Eric. You know, we didn't really have any concerns overall. Reduction in previous surfaces is generally a good thing. We did note a few minor modifications to the grading, probably because of the change in reduction in size of the parking lot. I did want to point out that there is a, you know, that the berms along the western boundary have the potential to block drainage coming from the west. I note that the grading does allow for drainage between the two berms. I just want to make sure that that's clearly identified on the plans so that the contractor doesn't miss it. Other than that, I really don't have too many other concerns with it. I do note that there is a significant amount of site work that's been done to the site so far. In general, it looks pretty good. There is a fair amount of area exposed, so the sooner we can get that area stabilized, the better.
So we've been talking about that amongst our team and the client and the contractor. We recognize the southern side of the site is pretty much at final subgrade. We've asked if they can at least move ahead with the stabilization of that southern slope, both with the trees, shrubs, and the planting of grass on that end. We'd be happy to forward you a schedule from the contractor for that. We can get that to you within a few days.
That sounds good.
Yep, thank you.
Great, yeah. Starting to get some rain, even though it's been a dry summer, but helped out. All right. Let's see, I don't know if Mark's on, but he had a few last-minute comments. Traffic's reduced, everything's, you know, parking's reduced, so everything looks good that way. So I guess we'll-
Kevin's on if he has.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm Marshall Mark.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Just say-
Yes, we looked at, and as you were kind of noting, the parking was reduced, but, you know, still exceeds the town code requirement. Then the vehicle traffic will be reduced, so it's a reduced size of that in the building. We had a few minor comments looking to the site plan. And then, you know, we did just kind of, we noted, you know, just with looking at the DOT, how it worked from which the area had received. But both the pedestrian crossing, which is proposed across Anthony Drive, that typically would be signalized, so it's just something that we were just kind of noting in our comments that doesn't appear to be signalized, but would be typically recommended to be signaled. And then we were just also looking at future work along Anthony Drive and just want to, you know, make sure those would be up for our work zone and site distance standards that would be for everybody's safety. It's kind of our comments that we had through earlier.
All right, all right, thanks, Kevin, for joining. It is quite a long, quite a long crosswalk along Anthony Drive there, so signalize would be good.
I believe the DOT has done some work in that area as well, and we were asked to do the crosswalk as part of our DOT permit drawings. So that's what we've done. With regards to the traffic control along Anthony Drive, if you recall, we are not working within Anthony Drive. All of our work is within the interior of the project site, the property line. I would ask that if, from the traffic control plan, if that could be held off to the point, you recall, we do have a plan in our set that in the event that the town is able to secure approval for us to do work within Anthony Drive while the landscaping pavement removal, we would include that traffic control plan at that time. But I think it may be premature to do something at this point in time.
I think I spoke with Kevin about that. I think his comment was intended to apply to ensuring site distances for the potential future trees along Anthony Drive, which are on that future landscaping plan. Is that, is that right, Kevin?
Yeah, yeah, that is, that's correct.
So read the comment really is only with respect to the future plan?
Okay, okay, yep. Yep, I remember that now, the issue with that Anthony Drive. All right, let's go around the board for comments. Peter? I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Second, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Anyone on the call or in the audience wish to comment on the Mazda plan today? Raise your, unmute or just raise your hand on Zoom. I'm not seeing any. Seeing none, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Now we'll go around the board for comments. Peter?
This is a diminishment of a plan, an application that we have already approved. It looks fine, nothing jumps off the page. It's a nice improvement.
Ben?
I don't have anything, except it's unfortunate they had to reduce the size of everything. I don't see any problems.
Yep. Rocco?
No problem here.
John?
Just a quick question. For the area that is presumably disturbed now but isn't going to be developed, what's the final treatment for that area going to be? Does that make sense?
Have you opened it all up?
Yeah.
For the original plan and the-
So that area is going to be regraded and seeded?
Okay.
Kind of the mound in the back will, mound got a little higher because we took the material to make it higher because we reduced the parking.
Okay.
All be grass.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, that was, I echo Ben's comment. It's a shame, I can't believe the construction cost is going this crazy. I'm sure you can't either. But I hope it's going to be a great project still. I did have a question. You have the rank, the parking along the closest to Route nine, is any of that customer parking? Or is that all car parking?
That's all display parking.
All display parking, okay.
To the south of Route nine. All of this, this up front here, this will be a mixture of customer and-
So all in front of the building is customer?
So in front of the building, it's going to be a mixture of customer and display.
Okay.
It'll probably be like half and half. But the remainder going to the south will all be display.
Okay. I just know it's tight to get in there sometimes if you're just trying to come look at a car.
It'll no longer be tight after the improvement.
So it'll be great. All right, and you explained the EV chargers. And that's, well, I had that.
I move that the planning board find that the Mazda expansion amended special use permit and site plan involves incremental changes to the project of negligible magnitude and scope that are non-significant and consistent with the previous SECRE negative declaration adopted September nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, as modified by the proposed incremental changes described in the amended application submitted August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two, and related plans and materials.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional amended site plan review approval subject to the following. Do I continue to read?
Yeah.
Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies. Said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness, including but not limited to the following, one through ten. And do we want to include the EV station?
And, and, yeah, well, he, yeah, he said he was including EVs in there.
Okay, and to work with staff regarding EV charging stations.
Yeah, I think you want to go through twelve, don't you?
Yeah, I think it's a typo. I think it's one through twelve.
Oh, one through twelve, I apologize.
Second, I'll put plus the EV.
Yeah, second. Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero, grant conditional. And you have anything further to say on architecture at this point? You kind of thrust your-
Yeah, I can bring it up on the screen here.
We have, we have the diagrams also. Any board members have any comments on the architecture?
It's what we approved.
It's what you previously approved. All we've done is, as I said, we've reduced the rear of the building and the drive-thru now has the same materials and colors as the rest of the building, the service drive.
Chris, I have a quick question. On our prints, it came out, much of the building came out as black. And I'm just wondering, is that a printing error? Because I sort of remember like a discussion about battleship gray or something. Is it supposed to be black?
I think it may be a printing error. I don't, I don't have as high quality. If you look at the bottom of the color palette, what I think would be dust is if I forward you the PDFs, maybe have a higher quality print set for you.
Whatever it is, it'll be consistent with what had been previous.
Is the color's the same as previous?
Yes, correct. If they're all the same-
No change.
It's just, I don't have the ability to print as well as a architect in terms of a color palette.
So then maybe just don't bet the color's the same as previous.
All right, I move that we approve architecture as presented with the colors in the previous approval. Second. Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero for extension. All right, good to go, guys.
Thank you.
Continued, good luck with that project. Next up is Guardian self-storage. That has to be removed in adjournment, so I move that the planning board adjourn the public hearing to October twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Next up, Storage Depot Expansion, Page Park.
Hi, this is Kelly Lavelle with KRC Planning, here with Ken Patzmento from LRC Group.
Yeah.
How are you?
Hi, guys.
So this application is just before you again, a, another, really a final review. If you recall, this project is especially permitted use. Is it okay by chairman's screening, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
So again, this project is especially permitted use. I think everyone knows the project location. This is off of Manchester Road, Route fifty-five, in the back behind the existing storage depot. And, sorry, this is a slight reorientation of the screen, but what we're proposing is just the surface self-storage facilities, the old typical self-storage facilities that one would see on vacant land. This is adjacent to the rail trail. If you recall, this is the rail trail.
Yep.
This building is our upstream water, wastewater. And this world on the bottom is just the internal world through the industrial park. And this plan has been before you for several reviews. The last time that we were before you, we were simply discussing the stormwater for the project. And I think we've gotten to a point where I think we've addressed and resolved that issue. We've, I believe, addressed all of the comments that we've received to date. We do note that there are a few comments from the fire department. And we're going to see if we can reach out to him. We believe that maybe he did review the most important set of plans because all of the comments that he has on here, we believe that we've fully addressed. We are proposing, I just highlighted this up in the top corner. I know this is kind of hard to orient, but if you leave, if you're leaving this facility, if you recall, this internal road connects to Ireland Drive. And we are proposing a gate at the end of Ireland Drive, which is the full width of the gate with a Knox box that the fire department will approve just to control the residential access in and out of this industrial park. If you recall, right now, there are Jersey barriers at this location that were placed there several years ago. And we agreed when we met with the fire department that there should be a gate so to make it easier for the fire department to get through here for emergencies with the Knox box. We've adjusted all the turning radiuses and templates and so forth, provided the turning radius for the fire truck. We are not proposing any signage on this facility, so this is just simply an expansion of the self-storage building that's in the front of the property. We did amend the fence, which is a black vinyl chain of fence. The only remaining issue that we have is for what I would call fairly minimalist area variance that we need to go to the ZBA. We're submitting tomorrow for the October agenda. And this is for a side yard setback. And if you recall, on, if you're looking at this plan as I am on the right side, we're closer to the side yard than what's allowed, what's required. It's fifty feet and we're thirty feet, so we're requesting a twenty or twenty-foot area variance. The reason for that is because this rail trail was built across the private property. And, you know, we're shifting these buildings so that they meet some of the design criteria that we need. So other than that, I think we've addressed all the comments. We did provide you, again with a swift, there was some traffic information that you would ask for. Again, just to update you, we provided this report from Poliers Engineering, which was requested, some traffic counts. And we have previously provided you with a full striding and signage, lighting, landscaping. We also provided you with, sorry, I'm just going to get down to this, two distances for the fire hydrants. So we showed that there are sufficient distances for the fire hydrant. And we did provide you with, this is ideally what these units will look like, but the colors and materials are the brown, the red, which is typical of the storage depot building that you see on fifty-five. So I think we've addressed all the questions and the comments that the board has previously asked for and the consultants. So we're happy to answer any other questions you have.
All right, thanks, Kelly. Kristen, for the department's comments?
Yeah, so as the applicant noted, the, just hang on. The application is back on for SECRE review, special use permit review, site plan and architectural review. As Kelly noted, yes, they will need to go to the ZBA. Staff has prepared a recommendation with several comments, although minor, I think, could be managed through a conditional approval. And to that end, I did prepare a SECRE neck deck for your consideration this evening. And if the board felt comfortable, they could act on granting a conditional special use permit approval and conditional site plan approval. That said, I recommend having that discussion with the applicant and making it fully clear that it's a risk of the applicant that if they go to the ZBA and they don't receive the area variance, that they would have to come back to the planning board.
Yep.
We do understand those risks. Thank you, Kristen, for bringing that. But we do understand and accept those risks.
All right.
But other than that, things that I know that the board was, that you were interested in, related to perhaps refuse, that there is no proposed refuse enclosure for the site and perhaps how that functions with the existing climate-controlled building. I think we're all good on parking at this point. And of course, just confirmation with the fire department. And then also, I might have missed it in the plan set, but just confirming that a note be placed on the plan set, on the site plan, about trucking off-site as required, needed.
We'll confirm that as well.
Great.
All right.
And it's on for public hearings.
Thanks, Kristen. Let's see, Andy, do you have any enduring comments on this?
Yeah, all but a few of our comments have been addressed. The only, maybe Kelly can provide an update on the status of the water supply situation.
Or I actually ran into Joe Nelson today, so I did speak to him. Just to bring you the boards, just to refresh your memory, this project doesn't necessitate potable water and sanitary sewer, but the project did go before the town, excuse me, planning and sewer, or water and sewer superintendents. There is a fire hydrant on the property, so Tommy, this town, water superintendent, of course, had commented on that. And in doing so, when we were discussing this project, it was apparent that we have municipal water and sewer that's running over private property, all of these roads in the back, although they may seemingly look like town roads. They're private roads. We've had probably about four months' worth of conversations with the headwaters office, Almatoli, and the page board, and with Tom, the water superintendent. And we've been going back and forth on what mechanism we're going to apply. At the end of the day, I think the town is interested- At the end of the day, I think the town is interested in sending one meter, which is the water meter for the master meter pit, and not having to send individual meters. Again, there's legal issues that are far more complex than I know that are being handled by the water's office and Almatyoli. So it's advancing, we're hoping that it's not particularly made a condition of approval for this project, because the Croatian Egingover Transportation Corporation could take in excess of a year. So we're willing to enter in whatever rate agreements we may be able to do to satisfy Tom's desire, which is to send but one water bill. Not sure if that's allowed, you know, permitted or not, but the discussion is ensuing and is ongoing.
Yeah, I think it's a little more than just the fact that Tom only wants one water meter to read, but yeah, I mean, I think.
It is, Andy, I just, there's so, it's so deep, I mean, I could probably go on for about an hour of the complications. I mean, we're talking about Texas County Water and Wastewater, private properties, the town, it's very involved. I've actually been working on this for a year and a half. So I just thought, for purposes of time, it is more complicated than that.
When you get millions of gallons of water passing right by there, it shouldn't be a supply issue.
It isn't, yeah, it's just, it's a, it's a distribution line issue.
Yep.
So, you know, we just need, we need a way to make sure that it moves ahead, right? So maybe it's possible the board has made things conditions of building permit or CO, that may be something to consider.
There may be an alternative. I think, Andy, again, I did speak to Jim today, and I told him there was a little bit of a sense of urgency because of this meeting and so forth in the next few months. But I did speak to Jim today. I think since this is, it's fresh to him, you know, this morning about some of the changes that occurred yesterday, then maybe we can give him a few days and try to incorporate his comments on what he may think is best as far as an agreement that we may be able to establish with the town while we're working forward with the PSC.
Alright. Lisa, do you have any comments on that as far as? If we go ahead with conditional?
You're on mute.
Sorry, I know, it helps to find the mute button. Every platform's different. No, the short answer is no. I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other. I mean, it is the applicant's risk to proceed. I don't know, I haven't spoken to Jim, so I don't know what the status of those conversations were and where they might come out on this water and sewer. So unfortunately, I don't have good guidance one way or the other for the board. We do have, they do have to go get a variance, so if the board were more comfortable, they could come back for one more meeting hereafter, and maybe they would have some updated information with Jim after that. But, you know, it is what it is, and if they don't get, if they don't reach resolution with Jim, there's not much that's going to happen anyway, so.
Right.
Can I ask the town engineer to, in 20 words or less, just frame exactly what the concern is here, so that if we had to put it into a resolution, we could, it would be sensible?
Sure. The issue is that there's multiple parcels within the property that are being served by a water line that is not owned by the town. And in order, legally, that water line, if it serves more than one property, it either needs to be owned by the town or some other legal entity, typically a transportation corporation or some other similar entity.
Okay, so could we incorporate that into, if we had a conditional approval, that that condition would be satisfied?
We've done it before, but typically, I think the applicant would be a little bit further along in developing the transportation corporation. So I think that their concern is that it's a, it's timing, not necessarily that that's your concern, but that's in due sense.
My concern only is that we do our due diligence. That's my only concern.
Yep.
You know, on our side, all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed.
You were about to say something?
Well, I was, I mean, I was thinking about what Andy had said earlier about maybe making it a condition of a CO later on. I mean, it's not ideal in that, you know, you build a thing and then, you know, if they aren't able to resolve this, then that's certainly quite a risk that they've taken. However, there should be some ability to resolve it, and they would have time while it's being built, hopefully, to get to a resolution. So.
The mechanism to, sorry, my video.
No, go ahead, go ahead, Kelly.
Mechanism to resolve this, there's multiple different options. So we can do, we can file for a light use with the PSC, we can file for a transportation corporation, or we can create a condominium. So there's several different alternatives that we have. Jim actually introduced another report this morning, but until we know exactly which alternative is best for this entire group, again, it involves the county and water and wastewater, I don't want to, to give you assurances of which one we're going to proceed with and the timeline that it's going to take to complete that. I think what we would ask for is, if the town planning department wanted to create some condition, that that condition be coordinated with Jim Nelson, the language of that be coordinated with Jim Nelson, something to the effect that the applicant is going to agree, you know, to work with the planning board and the town attorney in resolving this issue, again, because there's so many different parties that are involved.
Yep. Maybe, maybe Lisa's idea about waiting until after the ZBA then makes sense, because that gives us a couple months to, you know, clarify a little bit more what's, how this is going to be resolved. And, you know, it's not going to set you back, really, so I think that.
Yeah, but more than that, any other comments that we would have to address, we would do that even on the architecture, just so that, that flat, that the only remaining issue really is the area variance and then the language of the condition.
Yep.
Alright, fair enough. I agree, it's a little bit too much for tonight.
Yep. I mean, the water, I mean, there isn't even a big water use, it's mainly for fire, right? Not, you don't have bathrooms on the site.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, it's sort of like a splinter, you know? It's like the smallest little thing, but it's just the most painful. And that's, that's what this is, but it needs to be addressed. You know, there's other undeveloped parcels in the back that this will affect, and so it's important that it's done properly. And I think, you know, Andy definitely understands the depth of it, I did as well, and, you know, Jim certainly does, so it's just, it's not something that's going to happen overnight.
Yeah, but at least get, get something more clarified for, say, November meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we're on for the October 17th ZBA, and I think there's plenty more, like the 20th or something like that, so we might be able to defer to October, that would be ideal.
Okay. Just can't submit, but the ZBA would be done. Well, what, if you, if we deferred to October, will you be getting us responses to comments and everything in time for the middle deadline?
Well, whatever, I mean, it wouldn't be any different than tonight if we had a conditional approval that we would have to meet those conditions in order to have the plan signed. I think the only remaining condition is, what is the issue that we're going to address as far as this, you know, resolving the water?
Yep. So you'll respond with all, to all the other comments, then?
So I think the, let me just back for a second. So the September 20th, September 26th is the submission deadline for the October meeting, so you do have a week. I think it would be the board's preference if you could provide a written response to comments, because there are actually a few items in my memo. And I think if we can just hammer out some of those other things with the fire department, it would be appreciated.
They want to defer to the November meeting, because we won't, we won't make that. We need a July meeting. November is a great, sorry.
Okay, then that makes sense.
I mean, you have an extra week this time, but if you're still not sure that you get through it, then.
Well, it's just coordinating a meeting with, with George and then getting his comments and then making edits and then getting it all ready to get back in.
To the town, we won't, we won't be able to do it by the 26th. If it had been a conditional approval and these comments were needed for the signature, that's what we thought, we were, we would defer to October. And the only remaining issue out there was, what is the condition for the, for the water?
That also, though, just to add another fun layer, I actually won't be around next week, so next week would be the only chance for us to sort of sort out that conditional approval item with town council. So I won't even be here, so really, we do need the time, I think, and you need the time, and we'll, we'll make that happen.
Okay. Alright, sounds, sounds like the plan. Alright, this is on for a public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. Anyone on the Zoom or in the room that wishes to comment on Storage Depot? Scrolling through, seeing none, I move we adjourn the public hearing to November 17th, 2022.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. Now, let's go on the board for additional comments. Start with John's time.
I don't really have anything, I just would agree with Peter in the sense that I would like to see the water issue whenever it's ultimately addressed, like addressed definitively, so it's not dependent upon a subsequent conversation and a subsequent agreement that isn't determined. You know, the parameters are known at our meeting when we decide, you know, to approve it. That's my only comment.
Alright, thanks, Rocco.
Yeah, I called that as well.
Ben?
Nothing.
Peter?
No.
Nothing further. And myself, I'll just note, you know, that you put the black coating on the fence that tends to dissolve in the background, so I'm happy with that fence color. I had a question on vehicles, vehicle storage. Is that for RVs and boats and how many? How do you avoid them getting? How do you avoid, get, how do you avoid getting in the way of the fire trucks and all that stuff?
We'll show the striping there, it is intended for that use, so we'll show just some striping there, or we can show where vehicles could be parked. And that we're just in favor of the fire department.
Yep, that's why I wanted to make sure that it won't, won't get too many vehicles and then suddenly, you know, they can't get through.
It also won't, it shouldn't interfere with the snow storage.
Snow storage.
Right, that's the other thing, too, so we'd have to just take that into.
Things like that will typically be stored over the winter. Yep. Alright.
Oh, we're doing the seeker, right?
Yes. So they can go through the ZBA, go ahead with the. Yeah.
I move that the planning board determine that the proposed storage depot expansion, Park, Page Park application, would not have significant adverse impact on the environment for the reasons set forth in the secret negative declaration for a type-one action dated September 15th, 2022.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded for seeker, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero.
I move that the planning board defer further action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments in writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following items, 1 through 12.
And I would add 13, resolve, further resolve the water.
Yeah, number 13 with regards to the water issue discussed today.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Alright, good luck getting that resolved.
Great, thank you.
Next up is Nine Lagrange Avenue.
Good evening.
Hi. Brandon out there for this?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Good evening, how are you?
Go ahead, you've made some changes since last time, so go ahead and present what they are.
Yes, I'm going to share my screen here.
Sure.
Okay. So we've made some revisions since the last time the board saw this project. What we've now done is we have eliminated the apartments from the rear garage structure. We still intend to demolish that structure because it is in disrepair. And to move that structure towards the rear of the property a little bit further, and the reason for doing that is to increase the circulation here in the parking and drive areas. We've also, as requested, increased the width of the driveway for better access down through the site. We've now relocated the apartments all onto the front structure, the existing two-family structure. What we have now is we have a single unit on the first floor, that's a three-bedroom unit. Second floor is a single unit as well, that'll be a two-bedroom unit. And then the third story, we're going to expand the attic into an actual third story for the whole footprint of the building, and that'll combine for two units that are on each. Some other changes that the board probably hasn't seen was some increase in the landscaping. We've developed the site lighting a little bit further, a refuse enclosure, which is located here along the building. That will have fire sprinkler protection, so the fire department is aware of that. Additional changes that occurred since the last time we've seen the project, I guess we can kind of go through the floor plans a little bit here. We've increased the ADA access, it's actually a requirement, this is now in an ADA adat hole apartment, this, this unit here. We've gone ahead and added some of the fire department's comments as far as the Siamese connection, knock box, firearm, they're located on the first floor. The second floor floor plan, as I mentioned, was a two-bed, single unit, and then here is the third floor plan. And that has, as I mentioned, two units, one located here, and then the second located here in the back. Just to kind of go over the garage now, we'll have no units in it, it will just have a two-car for the residents and a storage area for the residents as well. And then the exteriors of the building are very similar to what was presented initially. We intend to keep generally the look, the front facade of the building, you'll see the dormers here that increase that, that allows to create that third story. But we are going to re-clad the facade, we have brick veneer that's being placed at the base, some metal accent roofing, some vinyl shakes and vinyl siding improvements. And then the garage building, as you'll notice now, is a single story, just two garage bays and double door access. That pretty much brings us up to date. I think we've addressed most of the concerns of the project with the board and, and engineering. We do have a couple minor items as it relates to water service, I think we did certain work role, but I think we're, we're pretty close to this point. We do have the variances that we have to work through, well, mostly that has to do with density, those are the same variances that would have been applied previously, because we have four units on the site. And now we've added the rear yard step back in an effort to make the vehicular circulation better, as I mentioned, with the garage in the rear. Other than that, I think that brings us up to date, so, and back to the board.
Alright, thanks for that update. Kristen, this is yours also.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, Brandon, I think you did a pretty thorough job, so thank you for that. The application is on for a public hearing this evening, seeker review, special use permit review and site plan review. This is an unlisted action, subject to an uncoordinated review, I'll get back to that in a minute. I have relatively minor comments from a planning department perspective, I do appreciate the acknowledgement of some of the fire department comments. I do know that engineering still has a number of comments that they'd like to see addressed, I'll let you get to that, Anthony. But back to the seeker component, if the board so chooses, there is a draft negative declaration for your consideration this evening. And upon further contemplation, given the importance of the, the area variance required regarding the multifamily dwelling, the density requirement that needs to be sought by the, or from the ZBA, staff is recommending that you would defer action on the rest of the application. Ultimately, if they don't achieve that area variance from the ZBA, the project can't move forward as currently proposed, so it's pretty significant. And that would be staff's recommendation, of course, the board could act in contrast to that if they so choose. But otherwise, again, relatively minor from a planning department perspective, and I think that's it.
Right. Andy?
Sure. So we're, as, as the applicant mentioned, we are looking for some additional information on the water service and some, the actual location of the existing sewer service. We're also looking for some site topography, spot elevations to clarify stormwater flow and direction and how that's going to be handled. Plus, we'll need some elevations to understand how the ADA parking space works and to make sure that it complies with ADA requirements. Among other things, we're also looking for some details, kind of standard details on erosion type of control issues, so.
Okay, so still, still quite a few issues to.
Yeah.
To deal with. Alright, it's on for public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. Can you un, unshare the screen at this point, Brandon, so we can see if anyone's waving a hand to talk? waving a hand to talk? Anyone wish to make comments on this application? Anyone on the Zoom, anyone in the audience? I mean, when do you think you can come back again? If you're able, I mean, you're basically.
Uh, our thought process obviously is, is that the variances are very important as well, so our owner, um, doesn't want to move forward, uh, I, I do think there are minor issues, I think they're easy to develop, uh, the details that engineering is asking for, um, it's just the owner at this point didn't want to go forward with that until we got the variance, so I would really feel that that's probably our next step before we move forward with the flow calculations and rating plans and those sorts of things, um, because as staff mentioned, you know, we don't get the, the, uh, density variance, that there's, there's really not a lot of.
Then, you know, spend the money on all that, yeah, all that.
Yeah.
So it sounds like, you know, getting ready for the November meeting, and if you get to the ZBA in October.
Yeah, that would be our best bet.
All right, I move that the planning board adjourn the public hearing to November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Moved to seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion passes five to zero. All right, go around the board for comments, Peter?
Uh, just that, uh, overall, it looks good, and it's going to be a big improvement to that neighborhood.
Yep.
I hope it works out.
Ben?
I like it too, but that's all.
Rocco?
Yeah, it looks good, those, uh, third-floor apartments are, uh, uh, rather cozy, I would say.
Those are the one bedrooms?
Yeah, like, four hundred plus square feet.
Yes, that's, that's why they're one bedrooms only.
Joan?
I have no comments, thank you.
Okay. Yep, um, my only comment is, uh, it is going to be an improvement, and I like the architecture as you're showing it so far, so we'll, uh, go with that, and, uh.
We don't, I don't think we need to do Seeker actually, because it's an uncoordinated review, so the ZBA will do its own Seeker, right? Am I?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So there's not an advantage to doing it, I don't think.
Yes.
Except that I.
Oh, did I mess you up?
That I drafted it.
Oh, okay.
That's okay.
I apologize.
It can stay in draft form.
I move that the planning board defer further action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments in writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following items one through nine.
Second.
Moved to seconded to defer, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Good luck getting those issues resolved, and.
Thank you.
See you next time.
Okay.
There's a few adjournments to take care of, so I, next one up is, I only confirms, I move the public hearing be adjourned to November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Moved to seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion passes five to zero. Eight Tucker Drive, I move that the planning board adjourn the public hearing to October twentieth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Moved to seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion passes five to zero. Next up is all space self-storage expansion. I move that the public hearing be adjourned to October twentieth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Moved to seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion passes five to zero again. And next up is mobile station at North Road. I move that the planning board, public hearing be adjourned to October twentieth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Moved to seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion passes five to zero. All right, at this time, I move we allow public comment on any other items on tonight's agenda, and ask that you please limit the comments to no more than three minutes, and the planning board will consider the comments during this portion of the meeting, but not necessarily respond to them during that, during the meeting.
Second.
Moved to seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion passes five to zero. All right, we have a couple remaining items, is there anyone in the audience wish to comment on any remaining items? Come on up. We have one here.
Michelle, is the microphone just down on that side, or is, I can't see it from here?
It's just moved down.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, good evening, everybody. Um, this meeting is kind of early for people that are working, and, um, uh, I did not, we did not receive the agenda until quite late in the game. Joan, are you usually in the city?
No, I live in the town of Poughkeepsie.
Oh, okay, I thought you were on, uh, this, one of the city boards for planning or something. Hello?
Uh, which application you commenting on, I assume?
Well, it would be the vertical bridge, yeah, as you probably know. Um, and it's also interesting that I was told that that Eight Tucker Drive had nothing to do with Vertical Bridge, this was months ago, and I guess it does.
Does not.
Does not, it's not like a holding place for construction materials?
Other than the same street.
Okay, fine, I feel a little bit better. Um, so after the last planning board meeting, I think of the twenty-first, I, I, I recalled, um, uh, someone who, uh, a, a town official who said, gee, Michelle, you're brave. I was like, what are you talking about? You're brave for speaking out about RF microwave radiation and all this stuff. Um, and I really didn't understand what she was saying until the smart meter appeared on my townhouse. After eleven years of having an analog meter, non-transmitting standard meter, I suddenly, for no cause, um, nothing was wrong with it, it was replaced. And, um, as everybody knows, um, Central Hudson will resist, uh, and they will actually lie to you and tell you that no analog meters are being manufactured today, where in fact that is a lie, and I know of a manufacturer that does produce them, non-transmitting, non-receiving mechanical meters, but they'll find another reason why they're not going to do it. The other interesting point is that at a trade show, um, uh, someone in the, um, smart-metering, um, uh, realm of things said, you know, we make more money selling the personal information that we receive, the data we receive, than we do on the energy that, you know, that we sell.
Uh, okay, so, I mean, that's all wrong, good, but I was trying to.
I will speak to Vertical Bridge, there's, and there's pretty much nobody here, so I appreciate a little bit of extra time.
Still developing.
So here it goes, um, if we, if we attach things to this, uh, uh, lattice tower, that's going to be a problem. I live a hu, a thousand fifty-six, uh, feet from the antenna, the AM antenna, the, the rail trail is five hundred feet, stop and shop parking lot is probably within that same distance, and most of the radiation will fall between a hundred and forty-six feet and a thousand feet. So that's going to be a problem if we add that, and if we add all that, it's not a replacement in kind, we're caring more about the turtles, by the way, there are about ten pages of guidance on, uh, what to feed the turtles, how to trap the turtles, the Blandings turtles that are on-site there, then they do human beings, so I guess the DEC cares more about the turtles.
Well, yeah, there's a, turtles have to be looked at as part of a.
Yeah.
Part of the site planned to.
I, I'd love.
We have, we have consultants that review that, so.
I'd, I'd love them to look at human beings and to consider them, there are no engineering specs that are, uh, specific to that tower, they just say it's going to be the same, I think that should be unacceptable, I think we should know what the frequency, power levels, modulation, detuning information, inventory on, uh, proximal towers and more, but the town wouldn't know how to do that because they have, uh, a non-existent telecom code right now in place. The owner information, iHeart Media versus Clear Channel Broadcasting, I think Clear Channel was involved in bankruptcy, uh, restructuring, then they were shoved under the iHeart Media umbrella, and so, you know, based on that, because it sounds like to me they're restructuring for a fall, that's what companies usually do, and the fall will be when the FCC guidelines are updated and people realize that they've been harmed. So I would say that Lisa Cobb should be asking for, um, you know, a deeper, broader insurance, um, uh, policy that includes, uh, pollution, it doesn't have a pollution exclusion. And wrapping it up, um, I will say that, um, the rail trail, I mean, it's going to be within five hundred feet of whatever appurtenances are attached to that, which will probably be below two hundred feet, I'm imagining, because then it's, the, the emissions won't have to be licensed, registered, or measured by the FCC, which the FCC hardly does anyway.
Well, thanks.
So.
I mean, at this point, we have not.
You hear what I'm saying?
Any attachments to the.
Yeah, I know at this point, but that, that's, plus why they would change it up, they're not doing it for our benefit, they want the, the structure to be different so they can charge fees for, uh, carriers to, uh, to add their equipment to it and then make some more money, but it's all, likely, I mean, I don't really know, Carl, but likely they'll want to put them, uh, under two hundred feet.
We'll have to deal with that when.
Right aimed at Michelle, and this is like discrimination, folks, I'm being discriminated against as an electro-sensitive person, um, so.
Thanks for your comments. Vertical Bridge is on here just for, for time extension today, so we'll, we'll get to that.
Is there anyone else who?
Any other comments on other, other of tonight's plans?
There's a hand.
Does that like a comment?
There's a hand, yeah, go ahead.
Um, my name is Gina, I've been there now, this is my fifth time speaking before you, um, so I couldn't be here in person last minute, but at least we have technology. Um, I'm very concerned that I'm coming every month and saying the same thing, this technology is dangerous, and I don't see where you have agreed or are willing to take responsibility for finding a way to, uh, put some guidelines, some, some, you know, ordinances that will control the amount of radiation that's going to be heaped on people. And I, I, I mean, I have to keep asking this question, how many people have to get sick with tumors? How many people have to get sick, how many children, uh, have to present with attention deficit disorder, uh, symptoms because their brains don't function well, because they're, oh, this electromagnetic radiation, and then we give them drugs? You know, I mean, is, is there no economic incentive in protecting the people of Poughkeepsie? Why is it that Eastern Connecticut was able to put a moratorium in, and they're happy to wait till the FCC figures out what they're doing, to update their, their, uh, their guidelines, and they're studying this, are you studying this? What are you doing to protect your people? Where is, uh, where's your responsibility in all of this? And if I have to come back every month to ask these questions, I'm beginning to wonder what would it take to get some responsible behavior, some logical, common sense behavior from, from you guys? What, what is it going to take? How many people have to come and complain, how often do we have to complain, and how many people have to get sick? Until you actually do something to protect the people of Poughkeepsie? And I'm going to leave you with that, thank you very much.
All right, thanks for your comments. Anyone else? Seeing none, I move we resume the meeting.
Second.
Moved to seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion passes five to zero. All right, next up on the agenda is Dela Verne Avenue subdivision, some changes to that plan. Amy, I see you're on, waiting.
Hello, everyone.
Hello. So, you want, you want to show your screen and?
Sure.
Present your update? I guess it says significant change.
So, uh, the project now, it was once before you as a seven-lot subdivision and then reduced to a six-lot subdivision, and now it's a proposed three-lot subdivision. There's an existing house which is bifurcated by the Village of Wapinners and Town of Poughkeepsie Line. The house is proposed to remain. The two new proposed lots, lots two and three, are each over an acre, they'll have a shared driveway curb cut entrance, but the driveways will be, uh, individual, past the curb cut. Um, the site distance will be improved with the grading easement, so, to cut back the, the hill and, uh, remove vegetation. Um, the proposal right now is to connect to Tri-Muni Sewer and Town of Poughkeepsie Water. However, that's going to require an interuseful agreement, and I, there's a lot of questions up in the air about that. Um, there was a comment about a shipload land, we actually have that from a previous layout, so there was no concern with that, and I will provide that to the board. So this is just two proposed single-family residences now.
All right. Thanks.
Sure.
Kristen?
Thank you, Amy. Uh, so yeah, it's, it's back on, the, the planning board actually designated or circulated as, uh, intent to be lead agency in October, two thousand twenty, um, so what staff's going to do is recirculate, um, the, the updated, most recent plans and latest submission to the same interested and involved agencies as part of its due diligence for, on behalf of the board. Um, and then, uh, yes, this application, you know, would still be, um, on for a Seeker review and, uh, subdivision review, this still is a major subdivision, there are three lots, uh, being created. From a planning department perspective, I really just have standard subdivision notes at this time, um, I will leave the more, um, in-depth conversation for engineering to get into as it relates to water and sewer. Uh, you know, there's been some conversation even in the last day or so, uh, with the applicants, engineer Amy, um, you know, talking a little bit about how we might work around that intermunicipal agreement, um, and if, you know, septic might be okay on the lots, uh, this, again, is still very preliminary, there are a lot of conversations that still need to be had, so, um, really this evening, Amy was presenting the update to you, um, there's no longer a town-designated road on the table, and, um, just three single-family lots.
Yep, that's, uh, thanks, Kristen. Andy, I, yeah, water sewer, where a problem, I assume there's still a problem.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the, the, the proposed plan is, is significantly, uh, simplified, you know, w- with this layout, um, in terms of the complexity of the construction, you know, stormwater is not really an issue anymore, um, you know, road construction isn't an issue anymore, um, we still need to deal with water and sewer, um, we still need to keep an eye on site distance, um, make sure that that's safe where the driveways are proposed. Um, you know, as Amy said, the, in particular sewer could be complicated, you know, getting, um, you know, getting tri-municipal involved, getting the Village of Wapinners involved, um, if, if the plan, they plan to, to move ahead with, with municipal sewer, they need to have those conversations sooner rather than later to try to get that going. Water is a little simpler, but still not simple, um, because it is a town, it will be town water, um, but they would have to extend the main, um, in order to get served by the town. There are water lines in Dela Verne at, at this location, but they are Village of Wapinners lines, um, so they'll have to be extended. There's a lot of comments, um, I think that that's enough, for now.
I guess with the two new lots instead of, instead of five.
Right.
Sewer flows will be less, so I don't know if they could play into the, uh, discussions with Tri-Muni.
Yeah, and, and I think there's going to be some offline discussions with Amy and I, and probably Tim Teed from the Health Department to talk about options, um, see if there's a way to get around that, so.
And now the, the lots are bigger, yeah, for potential other issues.
Right.
All right, thanks, Andy.
I did just want to point out too, that, uh, I did make it abundantly clear, uh, that the planning board is interested in seeing the, um, site distance profiles, uh, when the next submission comes in.
Yeah, that's, thanks, Kristen, I just still be concerned on that, uh, curve, hilly curve there. All right, uh, let's, uh, go around the board for comments. Start with Rocco.
Okay, I'm sure that this is a bit premature, but based on where those houses are and the, uh, and the, uh, uh, the way the driveways are, it, would, would those cars be able to get out, uh, uh, front first, because backing out of there without the curve on both ways actually could be, uh, rather tricky, and then also the fact that they sheer a curb cut even though they're, they, they are individual driveways, uh, that becomes, uh, I have, uh, a few questions about that.
So, the, uh, the driveways at the top, they're about, I think they're twenty-five feet here, so it would be able to turn around in the driveway? If there's a better location for site distance, then the driveway configuration could be changed? That's not a problem?
All right, okay, yeah, I know it's a could versus would. Thank you for that. That's really, I know it's premature, but we're more concerned about these other problems because we may not get there.
They should look at those site distances profiles and make sure that... John?
I have no comments at this time.
All right, Ben?
I don't like to see Andy unhappy.
That says it all. And Peter?
First, Rocco, that was a good point. Again, the site distance, continue to be concerned about the site distance, particularly for lot number three. I have a question. Lot number three, the southwest corner, what is the area between the southwest corner of lot number three and Delavern Avenue?
That is about, probably about 10 feet.
Yeah, but who owns it?
Oh, from there to there, that's right away, so that's the, that would be the town.
Okay. Okay, yeah, that's just, I mean, the reason I ask on the site plan, it seems just to be hanging there in limbo, so.
I guess the right of way widens out that spot.
Yeah.
And who knows where it goes from there?
Oh, I see what you're saying. I can add a joiner line there. There should be a lot.
Yeah, it would be helpful if you could do that. It would make more sense. Yep.
No, that's not a problem.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Sounds good. All right, I think everybody said it all, so.
I move that the planning board defer action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments in writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following items, one through nine.
Second.
Moved to seconded, call to question, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. All right, good luck, Amy, with continued efforts on this project.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Next up is Vertical Bridge Tower Replacement on for a time extension. So I move that the planning board grant a time extension for two 90-day periods, moving the required construction start by, by date to March 22nd, 2023.
Second.
Moved to seconded, call to question, all is in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. Next up is zoning text amendment. Go to Mike for that.
Yeah, just very quickly, this is, as it says on the recommendation, this is a result of a lawsuit that was settled between the former developers of the Salt Point Center project, a neighbor that was concerned about the gas station that was proposed at that time and the town. Ultimately, the settlement asks that the applicant, which was Kirchhoff, remove the gas station from their project. And as you know, that project was withdrawn. And then they also asked that the town modify the zoning for that section so that certain language is stricken related to what used to be gas stations in the code. It's, you know, doesn't have any significant effect, either positive or negative, to my view. I would recommend a neutral recommendation. It's really the town board's discretion, and again, it's the result of some settlement that the town board agreed to, so.
Yeah, I guess it was allowed by special use in the current code, but that will be stricken out even.
Yeah.
All right. Andy, other, any comments from board members on this? Here, Ben?
Rocco.
John? I think I, I move that the planning board convey a neutral recommendation, not positive or negative, to the town board regarding the adoption of the proposed zoning text amendment.
Second.
Moved to seconded, call to question, all is in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. Last up is Eastdale Village, lot line revision, time extension. So I move that the planning board grant a 90-day time extension of conditional lot line revision approval from October 14th, 2022 forward to January 12th, 2023.
Second.
Moved to seconded, call to question, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. Any other business the board members wish to bring up tonight? Or do we just sit here all?
Was it, I move that we end the meeting.
All right, there's the motion.
Second.
Moved to seconded to end the meeting, call to question, all is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. All right, thanks everyone again tonight. Thanks, Lisa.
Good night, everyone.
Carol? Take care.
Good night, all right.
Good night.
What's that?
Good night, Carol.
You pick all the right meetings.